The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
This Tuesday I've had in the long term.
All right. It is 6:40, 7:00 p.m., and we are going to call the joint meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start with number one on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting on September 13th, 2022.
Move approval?
Second.
Any comments, questions, additions, deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number two is the consent agenda. It's letters A through H. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Any comments, further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number three. Therese, I'll let you read number three for me.
To make an additional appropriation of $1,450,000 within the capital projects fund funded by bonding for the public safety communications system upgrade project.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number four.
To approve a resolution appropriating $1,450,000 for the public safety communications system upgrade, to waive the reading of the full text of the resolution as presented at this meeting, and to incorporate it into the minutes of this meeting. And, Your Honor, for the last one, we do need a roll call vote.
Oh, it was a roll call.
You probably also should waive the reading of the resolution unless somebody would like to...
Motion to waive the reading of the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that motion carries. So we are doing the roll call vote for four right now? Want to do that and then go back to three or...
Well, actually, I would do the roll call vote just for three right now.
Yep, okay. Wanted to make sure everybody knew what they're voting.
Although I know it seemed unanimous, but just to...
I got you. Go ahead, I'll let you read the roll.
Mace?
O'Brien?
Olson?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Peniotto?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Heiser?
Yes.
Makowski?
Yes.
Lucitani?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
And Whitford?
Yes.
Yes. It is still unanimous, thank goodness. All right.
And then now, now four.
Number four, we can go right to the roll.
So the same thing would be to waive the reading of four?
Yep.
Waive the reading. I make a motion to waive the reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right.
And then whoever would like to also make the motion for this one, for the resolution.
Make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
No, for the resolution now. We're doing the motion to...
I make a motion to approve the resolution approving 1.450 million for a public safety communications system upgrade.
Second.
There we go. Now we do a roll call vote. That's my bad, Cheryl.
That's okay. I'm throwing you. Mace? Olson?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Peniotto?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Heiser?
Yes.
Makowski?
Yes.
Lucitani?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Whitford?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
And now five. To approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds, notes, or other obligations in the amount of $1,450,000 to finance the appropriation for the public safety communications system upgrade, to waive the reading of the full text of the resolution as presented at the meeting, and to incorporate it into the minutes of this meeting.
So we can have somebody...
So moved.
Second.
Yep. Roll call vote.
Mace?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Peniotto?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Heiser?
Yes.
Makowski?
Yes.
Lucitani?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Whitford?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, number six. To make an additional appropriation totaling $18,050 within the transfer station fund for professional fees.
Second.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And on to number seven, which I'll call Diane Upfor for our monthly revenue and expense report presentation. Thanks, Diane.
Good evening, everyone. You have the report in front of you. I just have a couple of things to report since this was distributed last week. As you can see, tax revenues are coming in pretty similar to the prior year, so no issues with tax collections. I think you were all copied. I know Therese Packett sent an email out. Our conveyance taxes, when this report went out, was at 48% of budget or $409,000. She did receive a conveyance fee for the sale of the Firestone building that took place, I guess, last week, and brought in $396,000 in conveyance revenue to the city. So right now, adding all of that together, we're at 94% of the budget, and it's only middle October. So I think that's really good news going into this year and planning for next year. Not much to report on expenditures. Still early in the fiscal year. You did just approve the upgrade for the communications, so that will be going, and we'll be looking at, you know, how we're going to bond that, whether we'll do notes sooner rather than later. But that project is on its way. Did want to also report that we did receive all of the ARPA funds. The state piece of it, we were still waiting for about $5.7 million from the state. We did receive that last week. So we have received all of our $27.8 million. Two date, $25.53 million has been approved by the ARPA task force, and that does include the Bristol Works program as well, which $2 million was set aside for that, but has not yet been fully obligated. We're working on the September 30th quarterly report. That is due the end of this month. Fortunately, the Treasury had their report already sooner rather than later, so we've actually started working on that. We are in the process of the audit. They will be here within the next two weeks. And as soon as they are here and we have good year-end numbers, we will have for the Board of Finance at their October meeting, transfers to reserves at the end of June 30th of 2022. So I think that's really all I have to report. If anybody has any specific questions on anything that... Anything.
Any questions for Diane? Go ahead, Marie.
Can you remind me about the purpose of Connecticut's real estate conveyance tax? The $394,000 amount, understanding that the Firestone property is quite a significant property, but do you recall...
I can't answer that unless, I mean, Therese has some background on...
Marie, what exactly are you?
The Connecticut real estate conveyance tax, just perhaps we can just take that offline. I'll talk to you later about it. Just wanted to be reminded of the purpose of the conveyance tax.
The state has had a conveyance tax for...
Long time.
Since, yeah, the 70s or 80s. They've always had one. They allowed the towns to do it sometime maybe in the 80s. I'm not exactly sure of the date. But there has been conveyance for quite a while. It's gone up progressively in percentage. Commercial is more expensive than residential. And back in the early 2000s, maybe, you know, before 2010, there was a push to take the conveyance tax for 18 communities. They called them distressed communities. Bristol was one of them. So they allowed the conveyance tax to be 1/2 of 1% for those towns. So that's where that comes in. And so again, the figure for Bristol would be 1/2 of 1%. I mean, the state of Connecticut made almost a million dollars on that particular sale. Yeah. My office collects that as well. We collect that money for the state and then forward it on to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Therese. Okay. Thank you.
Any other business to come before us? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We will start our meeting in five minutes. It is, yep, 7:04. I'm going to ask for your silence. We're ready to go. We're going to start our city council meeting for Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance that will be led by our girls softball players. Ready? Somebody start over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will start... I know, I definitely wanted to keep them hopping. So we are going to start our opening ceremonies tonight with two extremely successful teams, and it's with great pride. This has been a couple months coming, and we kept trying to get them in here. I'm glad that most of them, I hope, could show up. They've all been given the Bristol All Heart pins, and we have the Bristol Girls Little League softball, both junior and senior teams. It will walk away with an All Heart award to recognize them both for being the 2022 Connecticut State Champions in their division. A great accomplishment, something that has made us very proud. It's a great baseball town, and I'm very proud of all you young ladies and the coaches for doing great work. We're going to ask that they kind of come up in the front here, and we can take a picture, if you don't mind, for the mayor's page, and I'll... Yes, congratulations. So we will commence our meeting. If you guys want to hang out, that would be great, but I'm assuming that you all have homework to do tonight. So if you happen to walk out, that's okay. Thank you, congratulations. Okay, so October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and in Connecticut, 300 women have passed over the past year. So we're just going to take a moment of reflection for that. Thank you. Number two on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from September 13th and the special city council meeting on September 22nd. And I think we can take both of these together, right, Therese? Motion to approve?
Second.
Any comments, changes, additions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Public participation. I didn't see any. But we don't get off that scot-free. We did have a correspondence that came into the mayor's office, and I'm going to have Andrew go ahead and read it for us because it's Parks Department-related.
To the city of Bristol, from Kim Valenti, on October 5th, 2022, she would like to address the council and show her deep appreciation for the opportunity my child has had over summer, thanks to Dr. Josh Maderos and his entire Parks and Rec team. My child, Ariella, is six years old, attends Hubble School, and is type 1 diabetic. She wears a sensor on her arm that reads her blood sugar and also wears an insulin pump that delivers it to her 24/7. She has a 504 medical plan, and she requires constant attention to care and care from an onsite nurse while in school. Her nurse at Hubble Elementary is outstanding. Having type 1 diabetes means that Ariella can't ride on a school bus without a nurse onboard. She cannot attend field trips without a nurse or myself accompanying her, and she certainly cannot attend a summer camp without a full-time dedicated nurse who can oversee her blood sugar for dangerous lows and can administer insulin or meals. Last spring, I approached Dr. Josh Maderos about her medical needs because I wanted her to get into the summer camp experience just like any other child. I asked if it would be accommodated. The answer was a resounding yes, and that the Parks and Rec Department not only strives to be inclusive to all children, they have a budget to meet such needs. They diligently worked to find an additional nurse for the camp who could provide the one-on-one medical care Ariella needed. She attended two weeks of camp this past summer and had the time of her life, and the medical care she received was outstanding. I cannot thank the city of Bristol, Dr. Josh Maderos, and his entire Park and Rec staff enough for making one little girl a very happy last summer. And I'm proud for our city to have the resources available for such needs. Sincerely, Kim Valenti.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Very nice. Great story. I think for me, it's a great segue into our announcements, and I promised you all a little bit of swag here. So I'll start off the announcements today, and then we'll go around the group. But Andrew will have you pass those that way. The National Recreation and Park Association in 2022 gave out national gold medal awards, and unfortunately, we did not win the gold medal award, but the city of Bristol was a finalist in the Class Four. You guys have the magazine here, and everybody is getting a pin that they can wear, a gold medal pin. So congratulations to our Parks and Recreation crew to not only be recognized by the public, but also by their national board. So quick round of applause for our parks. And we will continue announcements. I'll start at my left this time. Sue Tyler, what announcements do you have?
See, on Sunday, October 23rd, we have our 53rd Annual Bristol Mum-a-thon being held over at St. Paul High School on Stafford Avenue. They have an 8K and a 8K run, and also a one-mile monster walk. And all of the proceeds benefits our Bakely Center over at Bristol Hospital. Great 53rd year. I mean, that's pretty, almost as old as I am. Okay, we'll skip that one. Just a little recap. We had talked about the police department and our faith community having a trunk-or-treat that was held this past Friday, and it was hugely successful. They're already making plans to do it again next year. And we also have our Salvation Army of Bristol, who teams up with our police department. They are already starting to do their Thanksgiving food and Christmas food collections, and they're also starting with their signups as far as the recipients. And instead of me listing off all of the dates and the times and stuff, this information can also be found on the Bristol Police Department's Facebook page. One other quick little announcement. We also are really excited. We have two of our police recruits graduating from the New Britain Police Academy on April 4th. So it's always a good thing to add to our force. So that's it for me this week.
Thanks, Susan. Sebastian?
Sure, I just wanted to give a shout-out to the Cemetery Commission and the Bristol Historical Society for the West Cemetery tours that were not this past weekend, but the weekend before. They raised a really significant amount of money for the historical society, and people actually, after they took the tour, they came back and they donated to restore the Civil War monument. And we raised a significant amount of money there, too. And a lot of that was singles, just dollar bills, that we were soliciting for the tours to give for that. And so the historical society, the Cemetery Commission, they work together really well. And also, sir, I think we couldn't have done it without them. They provide a lot of lights, a lot of safety for the traffic, cars coming in and out in the dark. So they did a really great job. And thank you, Mayor, for coming on top of the schedule you have for the weekends. Thank you for coming and supporting the tours.
I hate to interject, but it was very cool, actually. So I've been wanting to go for years, and it took me getting elected mayor to convince my wife to go along with me, but it was a great tour. They did a great job. Keep going, Sebastian. You have any other announcements?
Thank you.
Andrew?
I got one. The Bristol School Readiness Council has opportunities for children's and adults right now. If parents are looking for a high-quality preschool experience with their child, please reach out to our school readiness-funded sites. They have full-day spots that are available at Bristol Child Development Center and Imagination and Museum Early Learning Center, and they have parfa school-year slots available at all Bristol public schools. Contact Bristol Early Childhood Center to inquire with more info. Our programs are also looking for caring people interested in working in the field of early childhood. There are opportunities for educational growth and advancement. Again, please reach out to our school readiness-funded community sites, Bristol Childhood Development Center and Imagination and Museum of Early Learning Center. That's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Andrew. Cheryl?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple past things that I just want to acknowledge, and I want to thank the Mum Festival and the Exchange Club for another fabulous Mum Festival. The 60th celebration was recently had, and a lot of hard work went in by the committee and the Exchange Club, and we would be remiss not to think of them. We had two groups of lovely young ladies here tonight, but I also want to bring to your attention three young ladies that will be representing Bristol over the next year. With over 25 delightful ladies participating in Miss Mum, we can proudly announce that Miss Mum is Olivia Chapdeline. Junior Miss Mum is Abel Lynn Delage. And Little Miss Mum is Macy Hopkins. And they all did a wonderful job, and I know that they will represent the city very well in upcoming events. And speaking of that, Miss Bristol will be held October 29th, 2022. There is still time if you're interested, if you're youth-watching, a young lady-watching, or you have a daughter, granddaughter, niece, or whatever, please reach out to Linda Lubrico, and her email is lubrico, and that's L-U-B-R-I-C-O, at sbcglobal.net. There is still time to enter. Just recently, on October 2nd, the Bristol Parks and Rec, they actually, through the City Arts and Culture Commission, took over the annual duck race. They did not want to see this beloved event go away, and with about three months to go when this was handed to them, they successfully held a race, and we netted about $4,000 after expenses. And so hats off to this group for keeping the tradition alive and having some money to go towards future arts displays in the city. Lastly, I just want to remind everybody that Voting Day is Tuesday, November 8th, so our council meeting will be Wednesday. But residents can still apply for an absentee ballot right up to the day prior, but they do need to turn it in on Election Day for... Nope. Nope.
You cannot bring your own ballot. If you can bring your ballot in to turn it in, go to your polling place.
They need to put it in the box. Somebody has to put it in the box for them, correct? Thank you for that update. And if you're not sure if you are registered to vote or where to vote, you may call the register of voters' office at 860-584-6165. Also on the city website, they have a hyperlink where you can check your voter registration and where to vote. I posted this on my Facebook page for City Council, Cheryl Tebow. So if you don't know where to go, you can email me or I'm sure any of us on the council, and we'd be glad to give you the phone number and that website. But please come out on November 8th and vote. So thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Therese.
Jackie, I'm sorry. I have to interrupt just to do one other reminder. There are four ballot questions this year from the city, and there is one from the state, so don't forget about your ballot questions. And if you want more information, we've heavily put that out there on the mayor's page as well, too. So thanks. Cheryl?
And Your Honor...
Jackie?
Also, we do have it on the city's website. It is on the main page and the news feed.
Oh, excellent, yeah, with the explanations to the ballot questions. And anybody getting an absentee ballot gets that sent to them as well, too. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that last Saturday, the Commission for Persons with Disabilities held a transportation forum, which was a huge success. They had a lot of great speakers from HRA, Connecticut Department of Transportation. This wasn't just for persons with disabilities. It was for everyone. So we were pleased with the outcome on that.
Jolene, I think you might have a couple of announcements as well.
Yes, I do. First and foremost, I would like to congratulate Caroline Kelma, who is named Connecticut's 2023 Teacher of the Year. This is a huge award, and I would also like to state that she is the first in Bristol history to receive this recognition. Mrs. Kelma has been a teacher in the Bristol Public School Systems since 2002, and has gone above and beyond to teach and connect with her students. The Teacher of the Year Award is the highest award a teacher can receive. This award process goes through the Connecticut Teacher of the Year Council, which is made up of former recipients, representatives from educational organizations, business, and the community. This council reviews nearly 100 district-level teachers, which include interviews, school site visits, as well as focus groups with faculty, parents, administration, and students. To be given this award is definitely an honor and speaks volumes of how dedicated she is. So a huge congratulations to you, Ms. Kelma. Lastly, there's a meeting on Wednesday, October 19th, at 6:30 at Bristol Eastern High School. This meeting is regarding the redistricting plan for the 2023-2024 school year. The plan is segregated into two phases, which starts with Edgewood School transitioning from a K5 to a pre-K-only. Edgewood students will be reassigned to other schools. Phase two is planned for the 2025-2026 school year, which will entail the completion of the new Northeast Middle School project, which would open to be a larger-capacity school. West Bristol and Green Hills would transition to a K-8 to a K-5, which would reassign students to surrounding schools. For those of you that cannot attend this meeting, there is a link attached to the Bristol redistricting meeting invite, which will explain in detail phase one and phase two. I have also shared this link on my city council page for those that are interested in attending and would like more information. Thank you.
Thanks, Jolene. Did we miss any other announcements? I don't think so. So we'll move on to number five, which is the consent agenda. Items A through G, does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the consent agenda? Hearing non-honorable entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Your honor, was that Councilmember Penioto or Councilmember Howe?
Aye.
Howe was the second.
No, he was--
Oh, he was, oh, he did the motion. Tebow did the second.
Second, thank you.
All right, we're on to six, which is reports and committee reports. I'll start to my right now. Jackie, any committee reports or--
I do not have any, thank you.
Cheryl?
Just one real brief one. We will be presenting the plans for the Dog Pound to the Police Commission at the next meeting in October, and so I'd just like to give an update because I know we have a lot of constituents following where we are in this project. Thank you.
Great. Andrew?
Just a quick one. Dr. Maderos met with the Director of the ELS to sit and lock down a management agreement. They're both hoping that they'll have the resolution for grand opening on Earth Day in 2023. I also want to take time and thank Erica and Jamie for their hard work bearing the Dennis Malone Aquatic Center sign. Thirty years in the making, and now they finally have it. The playground at Stocks Park is scheduled to be installed in November, and you will see more significant changes to Casey Field and Stocks Playground next year. And last one, that the QR code program for the Boulevard Monuments is just about complete. They're recording the last of the stories, and then they will put it all hopefully for spring. That's it for me.
Great, thanks. And just a little bit more with the ELCT Barnes Nature Center Agreement. They also are looking at ARPA funding for their Wallace Barnes Nature Trail that is adaptive for all, so I think that'll be coming, too. And I think, Jolene, you had asked about that, too, and I know you're not here, so I wanted to make sure. There'll be more information on coming on that. Thanks, Andrew. Sebastian?
No report this month, thank you.
And Susan? Got anything this month?
Just two things. The Ordinance Committee, we are taking up Phase Three of the cannabis issue. So just for everyone's, you know, knowledge, so that they can kind of keep an eye to our next Ordinance Committee meeting, which is the first Tuesday, I believe it's going to be October 1st. At the--
November 1st.
November 1st. At the library, and this is Phase Three. So as everyone knows, we first took up cannabis prohibition in public parks and recreational areas. Phase Two was our debate that ended last month with the cannabis establishments, and now in ordinance, we're going to be looking at whether or not to allow prohibit different public places as far as cannabis use goes. So I'm sure that will prove to be very exciting, as the last two phases have been. Code enforcement, I just have a few numbers. We're still kind of working on our system to get numbers down so that we can kind of report. In September, our tall grass complaints dropped from, you know, 32 in July and 37 in August, down to seven in September. That's kind of expected for the time of year, but grass was still growing, and it had rained a lot, so not quite sure why, you know, those numbers weren't a little bit higher. We have, in September, we have four blighted properties. That seems a little low to me. I think that we had more than four on our agenda. And we also had 25 citations issued in the month of September. That was up from 22 in August and 16 in July. So again, just to kind of recap, we're still working on a system to kind of get more accurate numbers and, you know, ways of tracking and reporting. That's all I have.
Thank you. And I will just commend the code enforcement team and working together with BBHD and the Fire Marshal's Office to make sure that we're doing a lot more of the inspections as reported by our citizens, and as well the citations to get things back in order. So appreciate those updates. Jolene, do you have any reports or committee reports?
Yeah, just one. The Bristol Board of Education voted to commit to a one-year co-op hockey high school team with Rocky Hill last week. This co-op team is a pay-to-play program, which means the parents will carry all the responsibility as far as travel, travel and costs to play. Rocky Hill will be the host school, and will take care of the scheduling games, ice times, officials, et cetera. This is a one-season commitment, and afterwards, the Board of Education can reassess and look into this in greater detail for the future if they choose. That's all.
Great, thanks. I don't think I have any reports, any other comments?
Through the chair, and I would just like Commissioner Howe. So Andrew, we've had a lot of requests for lights at the Stocks Playground on the basketball courts. Please tell me, as you did, this upgrade does include that?
Yes, it does. That's the major upgrades coming with Casey Field and Stocks, so that is a big question.
All the people who've been asking us, the lights are coming, so you can play ball in the dark, or well, not in the dark anymore.
And that's actually a good reminder, I just thought of it, too. I think it's tomorrow night that the Page Park renovation update is going to be available via Zoom, and you can get that through the Parks and Recreation website. So lots of parks and rec updates and lots of rehabilitation that's happening in the parks, so great. Any other reports, committee reports? We'll move on to number seven, which is unfinished business. I'm not aware of any unfinished business. Does anybody have any unfinished business? No? How about new business? No new business. Therese, want to read the resignations for us?
We have three resignations. The first resignation is from Kim Valente from the Arts and Culture Commission. The second one is from Janelle Howard as the best coordinator at Parks Recreation, Youth and Community Services, and the third is from Brian Skinner from the Zoning Commission.
Great.
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to put the resignations on file and have a letter sent to each participant thanking them for their service.
Second.
Second from Andrew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Number 10, appointments, not a long list this month. A mayor's appointment, and this is just an announcement, I believe, Therese, right, to replace Judith Goff with Naomi De La Cruz, no term. I'll do another mayor's appointment and announcement, the 10-Year Capital Improvement and Strategic Planning Committee. We're going to appoint Marie O'Brien to replace Orlando Kelfi as a Board of Finance and Vice Chair member. There's no term to that. And then, I think I had one other, the other announcement, Northeast Middle School is just an announcement, too, right, Therese?
You did.
So Northeast Middle School Building Committee, we also will announce the appointment of Craig Kasamikas to replace Orlando Kelfi as a Board of Finance member on that. And then we have to do a motion to reappoint two people to the City Energy Commission, and we'll reappoint Tom Regani to a term that expires at 10/25, and reappoint Sheldon Scott, a term that expires 10/25.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Sebastian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. That's the shortest list of appointments. We have a few more in November, though, so, and with a couple more resignations, we'll have to work on that as a council. Let's see, turn over to number 11. Therese, can I have you read that one for me?
Sure. Approval of change orders for Damato Downs Joint Venture for the Memorial Boulevard intra-district arts magnet school totaling $21,047.39.
Move approval?
Second.
Yep, and just a comment on this one, we're caught up on these now, so these are coming regularly through the Memorial Boulevard Committee, and we should see smaller numbers like this and see this on a monthly basis until that's closed out. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number 12.
Approval of a four-year service agreement with Motorola Solutions for $3,296,750 regarding a system upgrade for the Motorola radio, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this? We have Chief Gould sitting in the corner, waiting patiently for us to do this, and this is just a reminder, although it goes through police, this is our overall communication systems that's come through the board, the Finance Board and several committees. This is almost a year-long project, so congratulations to the chief and to his team that he's put together that are going to be looking at this on an ongoing basis, too. We got a little bit surprised, and we're going to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future with our contract. I got them, chief, they don't have any questions, which is great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number 14. Oh, sorry, 13.
Resolution regarding adoption of a senior volunteer tax relief program for fiscal year 2022 to 2023, and you can waive the reading of this resolution, it happens to be very long, so.
Motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, that carries. Now we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call vote, Therese?
Olson?
Abstain.
Yes.
Howe? Penioto?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Lucetani?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
To the chair?
Yes.
May I comment on this?
Yes, you may.
Okay. I thought long and hard about this resolution, and many seniors that qualify based on income limit can't do volunteer work because of health issues. Not to mention that many seniors work part-time these days just to keep up with rising costs and to make ends meet. They don't have time to do volunteer work. And with that said, I find this program to be inadequate, and I believe that the city of Bristol can do better than simply provide a $300 annual tax credit.
Thank you. I just, I hate to call out the lawyers here for as a point of order here. It's a learning for me, maybe first time we're coming into a situation. I assume the abstention was because you had a conflict. Is that something that's fine to abstain from the vote, or should this be a no vote? Or I'm just, I want to make sure we know for future. Yeah.
I don't think your rules-- I don't, I don't believe the rules provide for an abstention. Any member can ask for a vote from a member of the council. Yea or nay?
Yeah, so the abstention would just be, and I assumed you had some connection to the senior center and didn't want to vote for that reason, so this is--
And if there was, and if there was that kind of a conflict, you're supposed to announce before the vote that you have a conflict of some type, whatever it is, you're supposed to leave the room and then come back in after the vote is concluded. You're not supposed to participate in the discussion at all.
Okay, so are we requiring a yea or nay vote here, or it's up to the council? I'm fine, that's where we're at. We have, we, I think the motion carries.
Could I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay, well, there's no conflict as far as I'm concerned, but was my understanding abstention meant that you're either, you're not for or against it? So am I wrong?
Yeah, when we, when we have votes, you help me if I'm wrong, Attorney Kerwicki, is when we have votes, it's yes or no. The abstentions are reserved for when you have a true conflict of interest.
Okay, all right.
But appreciate your point, and we'll let it go at this point because we have a majority vote, and we can move on. All right, so we are on 14.
Resolution authorizing the mayor or acting mayor to enter into a grant agreement with the Connecticut DEEP 2022-228 for $1,200,000 for the Paquabic River retaining wall replacement at Memorial Boulevard. And this has a very short resolution, it's--
Okay, so maybe we should read this resolution. Who would like to do that? First one to it.
Yeah, it's taking forever to load.
I got it here.
All right.
Be resolved that the mayor or acting mayor is authorized to enter into a grant agreement with this Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, number 2022-228, in the amount of $1,200,000 for the Paquabic River retaining wall replacement at Memorial Boulevard.
And do I have a second?
Second.
And just any quick comments, and I'll make one quick comment. This is very appreciative from the state, is a project that was a little bit emergent and came through, and they came through with a very nice grant to help us. This is right by Memorial Boulevard School where the wall fell down. Does anybody have any further questions or comments?
I have one comment. Did we not already incur expenses, then, that will be reversed out?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have paid for this one upfront, and we're getting a reimbursement on it.
Thank you.
Very nice thing. Yep. All right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Resolution.
Oh, resolution, sorry about that, yep. Roll call vote, go ahead, Therese.
Olson?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Penioto?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Lucetani?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes.
Motion carries. And we're on to number six, 15, sorry, I keep jumping ahead.
Approval of contract with KJR Consulting to conduct a diversity, equity, and inclusion organizational development climate survey, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents.
Move approval?
Second.
And just to give a little bit more explanation on this one on a high level, so we work with Cigna as our healthcare provider, and there are Cigna Healthcare dollars that allow us to spend money like this, so this money comes from that kind of grant program. High level, this is a program that allows us within City Hall, so this will be City Hall employees to do what I call a climate survey. Myself, in the pharma biotech industry, we did these things periodically. I know that Mark is here, if you have any questions, but since Mark has been here, we haven't really done an outside survey. When I became mayor, probably three months into it, we did do kind of an anonymous survey, got some feedback from employees internally, and just think that it's better to do this with an outside agency. This is paid for through Cigna, we got it approved that way, so the money is not coming from, you know, taxpayer budget dollars, this is coming from the Cigna Healthcare dollars. Any questions?
Yes, sir. So this has not been done in the past?
And Mark, we talked about it, hasn't been done in the four years that Mark has been here, no.
Thank you.
Your honor, I do have a question. Is a program like this a precursor to annual training, something that we have similar to sexual harassment training, annual diversity training? Is that something that could come out of this?
Yeah, Mark, I'll let you clean up my answer perhaps, but I think these types of evaluations are helpful to point you in a direction. So I could go anywhere, that could be one of the results.
That is correct. So to answer your question, it might be. So we're going to develop some metrics, hopefully from the climate survey, and the consultant does have the ability to, after they sit down with us and go over the metrics, address any potential problems or give advice. Some of the services that this consultant provide, provides is leadership training, training that covers a wide scope of D E and I issues, so it might. However, wellness dollars probably will not cover that.
So there'll be a cost going forward if there is some sort of training?
Not necessarily. That's, it's an option if we want to pursue that.
Right, it's the choice of the city also.
Correct, yeah. Correct, we don't know what we don't know right yet. We may have no problems. There is training that is available through the state and some of our, some other avenues that we have that are free, so we may be able to piggyback on some of those programs and get, and get the training that we may need.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll have to decide that as a, as a council, as we move forward, we bring that in front of people. Susan?
So through the chair, just to kind of, I guess, expand upon what Sebastian was saying, so this can't result in any kind of like unfunded training or requirements, or could it?
This is really just to show us where we are, some expectations and perceptions that our employees have. It's just a climate survey. After we do receive the metrics, and if they show significant problems, which I don't think are in play right now, I think we would know that, it does lead to potential training, but it doesn't put us on the hook for any expenses.
And those might be able to be done internally through HR services, and I think we have had, and I don't know if they've done those before either, but quarterly department head meetings just to share these results. And I should maybe add, that is what actually probably instigated this for me a little bit more. We did an anonymous type of Google Doc survey when I first started to just take the temperature of people, and some information came back, and we shared that with the department heads. When you do it yourself, you don't always get the full story, and it's much better if you can do it third party. We have significant healthcare dollars to spend with Cigna, which were left unspent last year, so we're just trying to do the best we can to continually improve the climate of City Hall. Anything else? You're good, Cheryl? Yep?
I can, just one quick question. I'm going to just assume, as most employee handbooks already has verbiage about what we used to call EEO and diversity and respecting others and so forth, which is already in our handbook that all employees adhere to and sign off on regardless, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
One of my duties as also the affirmative action officer is to evaluate our programs that we have, to make sure that, one, we're in compliance with the programs, and that our programs are sound with the latest trends and newest things that come out, but I'm not an expert in this. This group focuses on that, so they could show us if we do have any potential pitfalls to watch out for, and I think that could help us in any litigation as well, should something come up. It just makes sense to do.
Thank you.
Thanks, I think we covered that well. All ready to vote, I believe? We did do a motion and a second, I forgot.
Yes.
Yes, we did. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to number 16.
Resolution relating to Ordinance Section 13-122 through Section 13-130 Cannabis Establishments Regarding City Council Approvals. And there is a resolution to read, it's not too long, so you may want to read it, or--
I think there's an important one to read, and Sue, I'll have you go ahead and do that.
Okay. Be it resolved that the following requirements must be met by a cannabis establishment for consideration of approval by the city council. Number one, a written request addressed to the mayor of the city of Bristol-- Number one, a written request addressed to the mayor of the City of Bristol that the City Council approve its business location at a particular address within the City of Bristol. Proof of ownership or a valid leasehold interest shall be attached. Number two, a written communication from the city planner that the proposed cannabis establishment has met the requirements of Sections 124 and 125 of the ordinance. Number three, proof that the cannabis establishment has obtained a valid provisional or permanent State of Connecticut license to operate pursuant to Ordinance Section 13-124 at a particular address within the City of Bristol, which matches the address in the written request in number one listed above. Number four, within 30 days of the receipt of all of the items identified above, the City Council shall take action on the request for approval by the cannabis establishment. Approval by the City Council shall be by a vote of the majority of the City Council members at such meeting attended in person by the applicant where a motion for approval is presented for consideration.
Thanks. And Sue, I know that you kind of brought this through the Ordinance Committee. I don't know if you want to speak on this a little bit, and again, this is a second step that was required in our ordinance, and we just wanted to define a little better, so I'll let you speak.
So I think everyone's thoughts and feelings on cannabis establishments were made really clear last month. Moving forward, we have, as a City Council, have allowed two cannabis establishments to come to Bristol and to operate within Bristol. What this is, is basically like a procedure so that cannabis establishment companies who are interested in being one of the two knows what our process is. And I think it lays it out pretty clearly, and it also, you know, makes it very specific. This is, they have to have already gotten their provisional or permanent license. They need to already go through Mr. Flanagan's office and any kind of zoning approvals that are required, and they also need to, you know, show either proof of owning the building or their lease, and it's very also focused on the specific address. So a lot of moving parts here, and there may be an establishment that's at one certain address and looking to move. And we did kind of cover that in the Ordinance Committee, in the, in the ordinance that was actually approved, where they would have to come back, but this is also the process so that they clearly know what they have to do to come before City Council and get approval. The other thing that I think is kind of important, too, is that they have to come in person, or at least somebody of, you know, who has the authority to represent the establishment has to actually come before us in person, and I think that's really important as well.
Great, thanks. And just a quick clarification when I let you go is, this is for the two mainly hybrid retail establishments. We have no real recourse to come back to approve any of the cultivators, micro cultivators, food processors.
That was my question.
All that other stuff. So this is because we have only allowed...
This is for the two cannabis hybrid establishments.
Exactly. And we want to make sure that if there's a little bit of a rush, we don't know how the state is necessarily going to approve all of these licenses. If there are three or four companies vying for those two spots, we wanted to make sure we had an orderly process for them, so. And I, and I think through all of your ordinance meetings, Cheryl and Jackie, you'll agree this was the intent that you all had, so. Any comments from either of the other two on the Ordinance Committee first?
No, I was just going to clarify that this only, you know, went with the retail hybrid stores. The cultivators would still have to appear before zoning and follow all the zoning, but does, but did we had, I'm trying to think now, and I should know this by heart, we didn't require those establishments to have City Council approval?
No, I don't believe so. Right?
I got to pull up the ordinance.
Yeah, no, I don't believe so. You guys looked at just to make sure. So the question...
All of them have to have City Council approval.
Right, so we, you know, that's what I'm clarifying here.
Okay.
You didn't carve out an exception.
Okay.
So this...
This applies to all cannabis establishments.
Including bakeries or whatever you want to call them. So this really could be used as the performer for all. So does this with the, with the references to those certain sections of the, the ordinance that are carved out here apply? Are they, you know, to all?
They're going to apply to all cannabis establishments.
I misspoke earlier. Thank you very much.
Yeah, there wasn't any exception made by...
I didn't think so, so that's why I wanted to ask that. Thank you.
I think our bigger issue is the two hybrids, so we wanted to make sure we were very clear for them as well. For the rest, that shouldn't be, there's no limit on the number of others.
No.
Although we could limit them by our final approval.
But I think it's important that we know as well, they come before us, that they have the, the license, they have the approval, they've gone through zoning, and that's part of this, is all checking the box.
Yep, very good.
Thank you.
Jackie, you good with that?